All right, we can get started. Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, Councilman Costello, representing the 11th District, and Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District. Representing the Office of the President, I've got Preston Lewis. And representing the Mayor's Office, we'll get into the, into Montsy. This afternoon, the Committee will have a hearing on Legislative Oversight 22-0030, Legislative Oversight, Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention, for the purpose of the Committee holding regular hearings with the Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement, and other agencies to monitor the progress of the city's crime reduction and violence prevention efforts. This is our first meeting of the year, so Happy New Year, everybody. I know it's February and it's Valentine's Day, you guys get to spend it with me. So, always appreciate and, you know, appreciate the work you guys have done and some of the progress that we've had over the last year. I want to touch on a number of issues today, and so the flow today will be, police will present first and have an opportunity to talk through basic crime metrics, and we've got a couple of issues that we'll jump into for which they should be prepared for, and then we'll jump over to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement. Before we jump into everything, I want to acknowledge the new Director, Official Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement, and that is Stephanie Van Vroness. She's been a big part of the team since day one and has been an excellent partner and really look forward to working with you in the official capacity. So with that, I want to turn it over to the Police Department.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway and members of the Committee. Deputy Commissioner Monique Brown of the Baltimore Police Department, I oversee patrol and community policing. I'm here with Deputy Commissioner Jones for Criminal Investigation Bureau and Chief Graham from Fiscal and other members of our command staff. We are here today to present at the Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention Legislative Oversight Hearing, and Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Before I get started with our presentation, first, I want to thank you, Councilman Conway, for attending last week's GVRs expansion press conference. You know, GVRs's strategy is where the city and community nonprofit leaders discussed the success of the group violence reduction strategy in reducing homicides and non-fatal shootings in 2023. BPD is a proud partner in this strategy, as we work alongside our many partners on prevention, intervention, rehabilitation, and reentry to strengthen our comprehensive violence reduction strategies and make our communities safer. This work is meaningful, it is saving lives, and we look forward to expanding the work of the group violence reduction strategy across our city. And with that, I'll begin our presentation. So here, this is outlining our significant arrests year-to-date for 2024 in comparison to 2023. Even though we have had just a tad more narcotics violations for 2023, our teams and our officers are still out doing great work and focusing on the right individuals and still being able to make significant arrests. Our handgun violations, as you see, are just about even at the moment. Our robbery arrests, just because we all know that we still are experiencing some high violence, that's probably our highest, you know, crime number right now, year-to-date. We have had 66 arrests, which is critically important, just because that means that we are doing better investigations, have the right folks that we're focusing on, and making the right arrests for those individuals that's committing those robberies. You can go to the next slide if you want. And we're doing some checking with some of our data. Year-to-date, we've had about 151 gun arrests. As you see here, patrol is 140. Our non-p patrol gun arrests, we're checking on some of those numbers because they look a little low to us. So, that's something that we could follow up with you on, to give you the correct data. And just a citywide overview, right now, currently, we're still down about 16% for homicides, 17% for shootings, and as I mentioned earlier, our robberies are still just a little high, we're about 22% over what we were this time last year. But that will go into the fact that, one, we are still making significant arrests when it comes to robbery suspects. And then here, just a comparison for our homicides, for our domestic violence and our youth violence. Domestic violence is up a little, we've only had one domestic-related homicide, three domestic-related shootings, but I would say that our youth violence is trending in the right direction. We're 60% down in our homicides compared to this time last year, and 70, just about 73% in our shootings involving our young people. And this is just some of our arrest data for our juveniles that have been charged as adults. The year-to-date for all of the other, I guess I should say, for all of the other years, those are total arrests. This 2024 is just our year-to-date arrests from the beginning of the year until, I think it's February 8th. And this will be all of our youth-related arrests here, where they're still charged as youths, as juveniles, I guess I should say. And then for our carjacking and stolen auto arrests, for year-to-date, we've arrested 72 individuals involving our carjackings and auto theft arrests. Even though those numbers still continue to stay high, we're still doing a lot of proactive work around that when it comes to community outreach engagement with the clubs and things like that, we can discuss a little bit further during a Q&amp;A, but just highlighting here just some of those arrests, and they are related to some of our juveniles. And that's it, that concludes our presentation. Outstanding, I have questions.
Excellent, thank you. And I want to welcome Tyler Shinella from the Mayor's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, thank you, Deputy. I had a number of questions, some related to issues that we've been discussing for a while and kind of coming off the backs of conversations and other hearings. One I want to touch on quickly is, we've talked a lot about young folks and what we can do to better serve our young folks, especially when we see them involved in crimes. I want to say in a hearing maybe two or three weeks ago, we had city schools and others come in to talk about exactly that, you know, safety issues in and around schools, and I asked this question or a version of it during that hearing as well, but I think it's really sort of apropos for us to kind of discuss now how we think about truancy. I'm curious, for the department, when we see a young person who is on the streets, not in school during school hours, how do we engage that young person? What do we do? Do we refer to someone else? How do we handle it?
So, I think truancy is a concern for all of us, especially when we realize that a young person isn't connected to school. With the consent decree, you know, we have to be just a little bit more careful of how we engage our young people for that, because it's not a criminal offense. The goal would be to figure out how do we connect with school administration, you know, to say, hey, listen, we've recognized this young person, they're not in school, and this is the location that we constantly see them at. And then we can invoke our other partners, because they are engaging with our young people through African-American male engagement and through Dr. Brooks's Mayor's Office of Family Children and Success, they have an entire programming in process of how they are connecting and getting young people reconnected with school. I think that being able to take young people in for truancy from old times, that seemed like a great thing to do, but now that would cause more of probably some negative interaction with offices when it involves our young people, which we're trying to avoid, because it now will become a little bit more intrusive, because then we would have to take them into custody, and then we would have to transport them to the school to say, hey, we're bringing them back. And there may be some other barriers that's there that we don't recognize and won't recognize until we, of course, have some of that engagement. Maybe they don't have proper documentation that says, hey, far as residency, or if it's far as some health records and things like that. So being able to have those other partners work alongside with us to get them through the process, to get that documentation they may need, and reconnect them to school, helps us to have more positive engagement with young people.
And just to sort of specifically zone in on how we deal with this, or how we intend to deal with this, if an officer is, you know, on his post and, or her post, and comes across a young person in the streets, middle of the day, what should that officer do?
Hopefully, they find a way to engage with the young person, right? Because if they are out offending, that's the last thing we want, because they can either become victim or be victimized. The other part of it is, how can we help them? That would probably be the best conversation, you know, to see if the young person will engage, because if they don't, then that's different. But if we can get that young person to engage with us positively, to kind of have a conversation and share some things with us, then we definitely can help connect them to more support. Now, if that young person, just only on truancy alone, and they're not committing some other acts or some other crime, it may be a little difficult or challenging, I guess I should say, to just walk up and say, hey, what are you doing outside? That used to be a thing, but now it is not necessarily as, less intrusive, because then again, that may just spearhead another negative engagement with officers. Now, officer may have right intentions to say, I see this young person is outside, is doing time, they should be in school, and I'm concerned, maybe about their safety or well-being. So it could be well-intented, but it may not necessarily be that outcome that we're looking for.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'll circle back to sort of why I asked the question. I think I had, you know, of course, with more context in the previous hearing, it probably is more helpful to understand, we're putting a lot of money in our schools, and it is my and probably everyone here's their belief that the best time, or the best place for a young person, especially during the day, is to be in school. And so, you know, whatever resources they need, often schools have them, additional help, folks that are specially trained for dealing with young people, no matter what they're going through, a lot of that is going to be available in schools, and we are, with the current recommendations, implementing exactly those pieces. And so, you know, one of the big questions that comes up time and time again is the low rates of young people that are going to school. And there was an article a while ago that had some astronomical number of young people that are chronically absent, and it sort of begged the question for me, where are those kids? Are those kids at home? Are those kids on the streets? If they're on the streets and we see them, what do we do about it? And being that our officers are often some of the greatest emissaries out in the community, you know, I really want to beg that question, what can our officers do? Whether it's an officer intervening, or if they are going to refer that instance or case to some other entity, I want to make sure that we're thinking smart about how to handle it. I appreciate, you know, we want to be sensitive to not over-police young people. We also want to make sure our young kids are in school. So, you know, it's how do we make sure that young people that are, that should be in school are in school, and if there are services, resources, and otherwise that can help them stay on track, we're intervening early and not waiting until they have to drop out of school because they weren't up to snuff with their grades or whatever the case is. So, that's why I asked the question, and I would like, if at all possible, as a follow-up, just what are we going to do? How we want to handle it? What partners need to be at the table? Certainly, school police and city schools would be at the table, but I just, I want to make sure we have an absolute answer there, so that when an officer inevitably does see a young person out on the streets who's 14, 13, 12, younger, who knows? They know what to do, and they know that there's a system that is, you know, a well-oiled machine for dealing with that kind of incidents, because we all know, you know, pretending that we didn't see that 12-year-old, you know, out playing basketball, or whatever he's doing is, that's not going to help him in long-term.
So that's something we could follow up. I'll take back and talk to our compliance deputy, just to see how we start that conversation, and definitely work with Dr. Brooks and Dr. Bundley, just to see what can we do to close the gap there, and we'll figure out who to invite from school administration to help us with that, because I think they play a huge part. And definitely in some of the outreach space, they can help us a lot there. So, that's something I'll take back as a follow-up and see what we can.
I appreciate that, thank you. My next sort of round of questions, I really want to focus on the citation docket, and I've got the State Attorney here, and I see Hassan in the crowd, who's gracious enough to provide us some data to help inform the conversation today. You know what? Please, go ahead.
Thank you, I just have a couple of quick questions on the data, on the gun-related arrests slide, I think that's number four. Yep, yeah, there we go. There's a discrepancy between the sum of 151 and the 140.
Yes, sir, that's the one I said that we needed to check and come back with a follow-up to make sure we had it, okay?
Data is messy. So, the reason why the totals don't add up is because one of those, like, are counting, sorry, so the charge data is what you see on the two slides. These are charges for handgun violation. The one on the left is arrest data. So basically, there are situations where we have multiple handgun violation charges in one arrest, which is why there's a disparity. So, we just sent over a new slide that totals them up accurately, so it is.
Got it.
Right, so that was the issue.
I'm good, thank you, thank you. Next slide, citywide crime overview. Again, forgive me, Deputy Commissioner, sorry. If you went through this, but what's the quick 15-second narrative on the, I see a number of data points are down and trend in the right direction, which is reassuring, but on the robbery, larceny from auto and auto theft? Just what's the narrative there?
Yep, so, you know, in reference to the specific data points for, so if you say for like homicides, right now, our X-ray would show that we're minus 15% on homicides. We're showing down minus 16% for our non-fatal shootings. In reference to our robberies right now, we're showing minus 11% for robbery as a total. Of course, we do show up 11% in reference to carjackings for the other crimes like all.
Deputy Commissioner, please pardon me for interrupting, I'm not sure we're reading from the same sheet of data here.
So I'm going off of the current X-ray, I'm trying to figure out, that's what I said, for the current X-ray, if you're asking about that, these are the crime totals that we're pulling off of right now as well.
Okay.
So, what are you, are you specifically speaking to what?
Yeah, the robbery up 22%, larceny from auto up 67%, auto theft up 101%. I was asking for the narrative reason for what might be happening there.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, that's all right, I'm sorry, I didn't ask the question the right way.
Yep, so what we're seeing in reference to our robberies, we've seen decreases in our carjackings in reference to what was the uptick for the beginning of the year. We have been noticing, unfortunately, though, the trend has gone from carjackings to stealing cars and then using either those cars or just street robberies, which have gone up. We've seen an increase in street robberies in specific districts. Right now, we're tracking at least nine different patterns throughout the city. Some are older than others, so we normally track a pattern for 28 days. So once it gets off that 28-day, it kind of leaves the map, but currently, there are still nine patterns on the city. We have upticks in districts like the southeast and the northeast. We've known historically that these areas have been problematic in reference to robberies, just because of either the transient nature of the southeast district with the clubs and some bars and stuff like that, the northeast because of businesses and just paths that individuals take and are robbed along those paths. We like, I believe it is Howard County, has seen an uptick in robberies of juveniles on their way to and from school. So that is something that, as Deputy Commissioner Brown spoke to, we are working with Dr. Brooks and Safe Passage in identifying specifically those areas where not only school police, but Baltimore City Police can help in having an additional presence in those areas. So when it comes to patterns, what we do is, under the head of Lieutenant Colonel Herzog, we have formulated a new investigative tool. We have pulled the district's detective units out of the district, not pulled them out of, they're still working in the districts, but they're no longer under the command of the district commander, they're under Lieutenant Colonel Herzog. We believe that this is a fine tune of having an operational investigative mind focusing on investigative crimes. We both know that we all have strengths and weaknesses. We know that now district commanders are balancing so much between their crime fight and community, they're trying to give them another aspect of now also having to investigate burglaries and robberies may be a little bit too much. So, having the district detective unit under Lieutenant Colonel Herzog, pulling also MMU and RAT and other enforcement entities, we are now strategically placing enforcement components in areas that we're not chasing crime, but we're using the analytical data to show where we need to be, and we've had significant arrests by doing this.
I'm good, and when the pattern exceeds 28 days, when you said it comes off, the pattern's still investigated, you're just saying the pattern comes off the statute?
It comes off a sheet that we're looking at as, yes.
Perfect, thank you. And the last question is the last slide, juveniles and stolen autos. These past couple of slides, I had to do some back-of-napkin math, just because it's not year-to-date for the other years, but, you know, multiplying out by 10 plus or minus, you know, all carjacking and auto theft arrests, that seems to kind of be on par with the rest of the year. What I did notice is that there's only been 10 juvenile arrests year-to-date, and kind of prorated what we're seeing in previous years as somewhere in the neighborhood of like 30% of all carjacking and auto theft arrests are attributed to juveniles, and we're seeing potentially a reduction in that, or maybe it's a reduction in the arrests, and I'm just curious if we know what the narrative storyline is there, explaining that disparity in data. So like proportionally, 296 for 23 to 832 is like, I don't know, 30, 35 or 36%? And 210 to 755, right? But then juvenile arrests this year compared to total is a much lower percentage or ratio. Does that make sense what I'm asking? Or am I asking that?
I think it does. You know, it still is an investigative process, we have to be able to prove that the young person won carjacked, you know, so those go through investigative processes. If we can prove that the young person did the carjacking, then of course, we can arrest them for the carjacking. If we catch a young person in a vehicle, you know, the main, or the only thing that really we can charge them with at that time is the possession of the stolen vehicle. So it's still that balance of having to get through the investigative process to be able to determine whether it's from the victim who does an identification, a witness, or some other evidence that leads back to say, this is a young person who actually committed this carjacking or stole this vehicle, then we can charge them. In some instances, when we even make recoveries of stolen autos, all of the young people may not be charged with the auto theft or the possession of the vehicle, but now we can use that as a source to be able to come back to investigate to, right? Or against, I guess I should say. So if we have other carjackings, now we can, if they have some identifiers that say, maybe it was this group that was involved, then we can use that to talk to the victim, or some other evidence that we may have collected to make a comparison to see if that is, in fact, the young person who did it. So in some instances, they're also masked up, so we can't necessarily identify them until we do get them, unfortunately, in another vehicle or committing another act that we can, we can charge to. So, even though that number looks low, that doesn't mean that those investigations aren't still happening, it's just a matter of when we can prove to be able to charge, to be able to arrest a young person who committed those crimes.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner Nurse. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I wanted to kind of go through the juvenile arrests for DJS and also the juvenile arrests for adult charges. So, the juvenile arrests for adult charges is at 1330, but the juvenile arrests for DJS is 2585. What's the discrepancy there? Why are we not seeing closer numbers for that? Or am I thinking about that wrong?
That's total over about seven or so years, what's this, 18 to 24? So, yes, ma'am, so that's a total of over the years, that would be the actual total for those, what is that, six, five?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So that would be the total of number of those years. And just remember, these are juvenile arrests that have had adult charges. They're charged as an adult. The DJS ones are juveniles who are still had, with juvenile charges.
Okay. And help me understand the difference between the two, because similar to what Councilman Costello and Chair Conway just mentioned, we're noticing a narrative in our districts that, you know, young people are committing these crimes, they're committing these auto thefts, and it just doesn't seem to match up with this data.
So we're seeing that as well. It still comes down to, you know, to investigations, and it still comes down to being able to prove that the young person is the one who in fact committed the act. So, it's not that when we get young people, say for instance, in these vehicles, it may be multiple of them, but we can't charge them multiple if they're not the one who is actually driving the vehicle. Now, we have to go through that investigative process to prove that if they are involved in anything else matching up to other cases where they may have the same identifiers as who the victim is, you know, reporting committed these acts. So, the numbers may look higher, you know, in some instances, so you're talking about for juvenile-related arrests when they're being charged at the juvenile level.
Yes.
These are those offenses that we cannot escalate to an adult charge.
Okay.
And so for the adult charges, it would be those criminal offenses based on age that they can be charged as an adult.
So that actually leads me to my next question. What are the diversion programs associated with those juvenile arrests from DJS? Since we can, like, where does it go from there? What is the next step for these young people?
So we have, I guess, that would be two things, you know, from BPD, we have a diversion program now where with these juvenile-related offenses, in those top two categories, or I guess you should say, like, very minimal or minor offenses, we can divert before we even take the young person into custody. And so juvenile, DJS has their own program, one of the programs I know that they're really highlighting right now is the Thrive Program, where they are automatically connecting young people to this program before, that gives them some of the same tenements that we're seeing throughout GVR strategy, life coaching, you know, life skills, getting them reconnected to school, getting them services, jobs, things like that. So that is their newest program. Now, I know they have a multitude of other ways of how they're diverting, but sometimes that diversion doesn't happen in the front end of the process, it happens kind of in the middle or somewhere towards the end.
And when you say in the middle towards the end, does that mean once the investigation is complete, what's the?
Or within the process of, say, if we make an arrest of a young person, not on the front end, they may not be getting diverted because of the offenses that they have. It may come out as a part of their court process, that they are now being diverted to another program, because it depends on how is the case is adjudicated.
Sure, and so during that time where they're, you know, at home, they've committed the crime and then going to court, what is the follow-up process there in that in-between time?
Yeah, now, DJS may be better to answer that question, not necessarily us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I wanted to get into a question about an event that happened maybe three weeks ago. There was a fire that apparently took down our communications, and for a few hours, estimate somewhere three-plus hours, our radios went down. I'm curious, Deputy Commissioner, how we handled that situation, what we know about what happened there, why it happened, and what steps the department and partners, we have the Sheriff's Department here, I believe the sheriff is here somewhere. There we go, I see Sheriff Kogan in the background. Communications went out for all of our public safety agencies for a few hours, and, you know, I want to know how we dealt with that situation, and Sheriff, feel free to add to the conversation as you feel appropriate, how we dealt with it, what we know about what happened, and if there's anything that BSIT is thinking about to make sure that it doesn't happen again in the future.
Mr. Chair, so just, given the sensitive nature of that specific situation and of the technology in that event, I think that that's a conversation best had offline, you know, specific to emergency communication equipment and what may or may not have been the impact as a result of the explosion downtown.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Did anyone from the administration advise anyone on the council, including the President or the Chair of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee, of the incident that the Chair is referring to?
I can follow up with you on that.
Mr. Chair, were you informed?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, thank you.
Wasn't happy to follow up with it offline, I think, point being here, things happen. Wasn't happy to follow up with it offline. I think, point being here, things happen. We just, we want to make sure that things don't happen twice.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, I look forward to follow up, direct follow up on how we dealt with it, what happened, what we know about it. I want to make sure that, you know, this doesn't happen again. If there's anything we can do to help in that effort, we want to be thoughtful.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. The other question, so I was going to jump into the citation docket. I see, oh, please, go ahead.
Can I ask one more question, just related to this data before we get to the citation docket? Commercial corridors, we've been noticing an uptick of some of the juveniles kind of going into commercial corridors, smashing and grabbing particular businesses. How are you all addressing that in the department? I know that some of the issues that we've been dealing down in South Baltimore have been associated with that, the smash and grabs, but some of the young people have not been able to be detained or questioned, and so it's that lag time there. And so the community is feeling that it's just a simple release as opposed to actually policing.
So one of the things that we have, I have instructed, you know, our teams to do, we're trying to do more case-based place modeling, right, where we're really going and doing assessments in our areas when it relates to our businesses, to see what we can support the business on, whether it is some of their own security systems, giving them some security tips, maybe it's some lighting, maybe it is freshening up or beautifying the outside of their property, just so that we don't have some of that. Now, with all of that said, this is where we use our neighborhood coordination offices as well, because they have those relationships with the business owners to let them know, when we do have some of those instances, sometimes it's better not to engage. Some of our store owners, understandably, you know, feel as though, hey, listen, is that property, is that business? They do want to make sure that they, I guess, in some way, what's the word I'm looking for, protecting it, right? But that isn't really what we prefer them not to do. So really having some of the educational component with the business owners is where we're trying to really close the gap for that. Now, if they have great camera systems, video systems, anything that can give us some of the evidence that helps us identify who the young people are, that is again where we are now connecting with our school partners to be able to say, hey, can you help us identify this young person? So some of that is where we need to close the gap, because all the time we just can't identify them, or maybe they don't have the best systems. But really going around education, giving some educational component, but having a presence too. That is where the business checks are really, you know, critical for officers to have some visibility, to make themselves know that we're in the community, we're out about, we're walking foot, we're in, talking to our business owners, you know, and of course also sharing those safety tips.
Last question, Mr. Chair. So you mentioned connecting with Baltimore City Public Schools. Where is the parent involvement in all this?
That's a good question. I don't know if I have that answer specifically for you, you know, at this time. I do think that is another gap that we have to close when it comes to dealing with our school administrators and really dealing with some of our school, our other school partners that really help us make those connections.
Sure.
I can highlight, again, Dr. Brooks, because I do know we have done a few things together collectively where we are paired up with her team going out to do some of this outreach to the family and not just focusing only on the child. And that has really given us great outcomes in those situations. So trying to figure out how do we build out a real complete model that allows us to do that consistently when we do see that our young people are challenged, or that family is having some challenges as well.
And the reason why I bring that up, a few hearings ago, we had talked about the data inoperability between Baltimore City Public Schools, Baltimore City Police Department, identifying ACEs scores, identifying key, key kind of stressors for young people. And I'm wondering, Baltimore City Public Schools within the Kerwin dollars, they receive much money related to some of those mental health and wellness checks, and I'm wondering if there can be some sort of overlap there, because if they are doing this in our communities, I'm pretty sure that the likelihood of them, you know, doing or behaviorally acting out in schools is likely as well. So I'm wondering if that can be a charge within Baltimore City Police Department particularly, as it relates to data inoperability between Baltimore City Public Schools, the Mayor's Administration, and MONC, and also Baltimore City Public Schools. Have you all been talking about that?
So I can, we have you violence that. That may be something that's being discussed there. I know the Commissioner normally goes, and now we'll have my Deputy Chief, Riddick, she will be that also attending for us, for our Bureau, just to be able to see where we can close that gap. And I think that those partners are at the table there. I'm just not sure how we are connecting it, right, when it comes to our work and our day-to-day operations, just as you're asking, and even how it funnels through down to investigations. So with Deputy Chief Riddick now attending, that may be where we look and say, hey, listen, we could do more, or we can develop better partnerships in this work. So I understand where you're going. I hear you. Just give us a little bit of time. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I appreciate where you were going with those questions. A hundred percent. Thank you. So I want to dive into the conversation about the citation docket. I know this has been a sort of flagship idea from the State's Attorney's Office, and we had a hearing about this maybe eight or so months ago, when we initially rolled out the citation docket. And the idea is simple, you know, for certain violations that we had not been enforcing previously, we were going to write citations where appropriate to show that, one, we do actually care about this kind of activity, and for folks that engage the system, we provide services, so on and so forth. In that last hearing, we talked a little bit about some of the difficulties with the execution of the plan. Citations are, they have to be written correctly. A lot of officers weren't used to writing those citations correctly, leading to the few that had been written at the time to be thrown out. I'm curious where we are now with the citation docket. I'm curious how many citations we've written, how many folks have been connected to services, and I'm guessing State's Attorney's Office can maybe speak to that, if at all, and what we're generally seeing about the execution of this plan, because I do believe, at least in theory, the additional, just even basically addressing or having a conversation with folks, whether at least a citation or not, can deter a lot of this behavior. But if we're not doing it, we're missing the opportunity we'll never learn from it. So can you tell me a little bit about what we have, and I know we have some data here today, I don't know what BPD was able to provide by way of the citation docket?
So I think that you're right on point. The citation docket was, you know, built and developed, again, or re-instituted, I guess I should say, from the State's Attorney's Office to help us deal with some of these low-level offenses, that doesn't, you know, really push us into making more arrests, right, or overpolicing in a sense. I would say that this is just another tool for the officers to use. We did have to go back through an educational process with the State's Attorney's Office that has helped us tremendously, you know, building out what that looks like through our training, just because, you know, we have not written citations in a very long time, even for our veteran officers, but we also had to teach all of our newer officers what that even was. So having it, these citations, even though it may seem like we don't have a high number that we're writing, just because it is some process to it, I would look at the positiveness of it, that it gets officers to engage with our community or citizens, even if they are committing some of these quality-of-life issues that we know are nuisance to our community, but it also gets them to engage in ways that they probably would not have if we were not back into this process. So I can say for Central District, right now, for downtown in Fells Point, we gave over 757 warnings for 2023. So a warning is, may just be all that is needed, you know, that can help stop some of the offending or cease any other activity that we see that's happening, because now that person knows, oh, hey, this is a crime. And maybe some people don't know what they're doing is necessarily a crime, or that they can be issued a citation for, until sometimes we have that engagement, and then now we tell them, hey, you have to knock this off, you can't do that. Now, what we're seeing is that is helping. Don't have the total amount of data, because we need to do a better job at tracking that. We do have where we are still having just a couple of issues, not as many as before, of our issuing of citations or some of the data getting kicked back because it's incorrect. But I would say-
What was the period of time for the 757 warnings?
That's 2023.
2023.
Yes, sir. Since we started.
And I noticed you only said for the Central District. Do we have data for other districts?
We'll have to pull it, just not yet. We could do better at tracking them, because I know that when we're talking about quality of life, this is across the city, is not just only primarily in these two neighborhoods. We know most of our neighborhoods are experiencing, probably loitering is the biggest one. But once we give the warning, you know, we still have processes that we have to go through before we get to the point of writing the citation. The warning, for the most part, kind of stops the behavior, right? Then it has to be a period of time, and then we have to reengage. So if that, those individuals who do not stop the behavior, and we have to reengage, then we escalate it up. So in most instances, the variable warning is enough, and most people stop. So again, we have to do a better job at really tracking that data when the warnings are happening versus when we have to get to the point that we are writing the citations.
And how many, I want to welcome Councilman Glover to the meeting. And I'm not sure if the state is what I have here in front of me. Maybe, this is from the State's Attorney's Office, right? Yeah. Would you feel comfortable walking us through what we have in front of us, just so we can have a basic sense?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
I would rather-
All right. I would rather bring up Trish Darrells, who's in charge of the citation docket, and she can kind of lay it out and explain it for everybody.
That'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Good afternoon. So the number for the Baltimore City Police, their agency code is AD, which is the first group under the total. So between July dockets and the December dockets, 35 citations issued by the Baltimore City Police made it to a citation docket. The numbers that you see here are through the January 2024 docket. The January 24 docket, which will be, the citations issued in January will be on the February docket next week. At the number I have for that, the Baltimore City Police issued eight citations. Six of those citations were rejected internally by their review process. There are two criminal citations for the February docket issued by the Baltimore City Police. Those two citations are for misdemeanor theft from stores in the Northwest District. There are no community nuisance crimes. The Baltimore City Police, in the 35 citations that were issued, the Baltimore City Police internally rejected 68 citations. So just about half of their citations issued by the Baltimore City Police are rejected internally as being legally insufficient to proceed to prosecution. As you can see, many agencies do issue them, and they do issue them correctly. I have trained Amtrak Police, I have trained Alcohol Tobacco Commission, I have trained the Comptroller's Office, which is ATT, which is the Comptroller's Office. I am training Morgan University in March. The next group is the Maryland Capital Police. They rarely issue a citation. MDTA I've trained, and I have trained on numerous occasions with the Maryland Transit Administration Police. I did six trainings, in-person trainings with their groups. There are a total of 279 citations issued and prosecuted since the July dockets through the January dockets.
So if I could, Councilman, we as an agency have realized that about half of our citations, for one reason or another, are getting rejected at our own inspection and audit. We would prefer that than having individuals, for whatever reason, have to stand a trial or be addressed for something that may or may not have been an issue. So that shows where we are as far as transparency and during our own audit. To address this, though, what we have done is we have created Power DMS, which is our electronic system of delivering training on citations. We've also created a best practices placard for officers that shows them the proper charges that they need to do, because I think a lot of times what happens is it's in their written verbiage is where we're losing a lot of the cases. So we give them actually a handheld placard that they could go off of in reference to the most frequently used citations. In addition, within our record management system, the operator who does the citation system, once it has been identified as rejected, it is then sent back to the officer as well as their supervisor with the description of why it was rejected, and that they can reach out to her for training. So we have that internally as well. But what we will do, if we're not already on the State's Attorney's List, we will ensure that there is something going forward where we will also work with the State's Attorney's Office, either through our in-service training or a Power DMS, to ensure that our officers are being optimized when it comes to these citations.
And I want to ask this question before I hand it over to my colleague. I understand he's got questions, but it would be really helpful to understand, are there was 68 that we rejected, the breakdown of reasons why they are rejected? You know, it just gives us some more, a better operational sense of what's going wrong. And we'll get into this, I guess, a little bit later, unless we have the information available now. We successfully wrote 35 since it started. I wonder how many folks have received resources? One of the difficulties of us not writing many citations, or not successfully writing many citations, is that we don't complete the system. And if we don't get people through the system and connect it to resources, then we've never actually proven the theory here. And the theory is that if people are committing these sort of low-level crimes, we can help. But if we never get them through the system, we don't help, and so therefore we can't help. So I don't know if we have that data available in front of us or somewhere else, but there's that. I'll turn it over to my colleague. I understand, Councilman, Costello's got some questions, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Starting with BPD, so has training, because I heard that you've instituted some training. Has training already occurred for officers in patrol?
Yes, and the State's Attorney has been a great partner and have attended roll calls as well to assist us. So what we're seeing, you know, back to Chairman Conway's question, is that some of it is in the wording and writing out the complete wording.
If I may, but that's not my question. The question is, have patrol officers been trained?
Yes.
And I'm assuming like all of them, or 98% or some, you know, overwhelming majority of them, correct?
Yes.
And the State's Attorney has its own training module for this?
We do have a training module. I have not trained Baltimore City Police.
But you have a training module that's available to law enforcement agencies? Is that correct?
Yes. I have conducted trainings. I have a PowerPoint that has been created, and I have gone to the various agencies and done small in-person trainings, along with, we have created and had laminated for many agencies. I believe you have, we call the cheat card, which gives them all of the legal charging language that needs to be written on the citation to make it legally sufficient.
So when did we, when did the State's Attorney's Office train these other law enforcement agencies? Over what period of time?
I have began training last July. I trained the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office. I did four trainings in October, November, I might have done more than that. November, October, November, and December, I did trainings with the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office. In October, November, and December, I did trainings with the Maryland Transit Authority Police. I did training in August with the Amtrak Police. I've done training with, I'm doing training with Morgan in March of 2024. I trained Loyola University in September of 2023. Alcohol Tobacco Commission, I've done some trainings, probably in September of 2023. MDTA, I trained and gave them the PowerPoint in August of 2023.
So you made the offer to BPD to train?
Yes, I have made the offer to conduct roll call trainings at all nine police districts, and to do various roll calls. and to do various roll calls. But I have not been provided with any dates to come and perform those trainings.
Okay.
I was asked for dates in February. I provided those and I had not had a response.
BPD, can you please respond?
I haven't heard from her. Maybe this was prior to our transition, but I'll get with her before we leave today.
I've been in contact with their training division. I believe it's Lieutenant Joshua Rosenblatt and Timothy Dixon, who I was directed to contact to conduct, to schedule trainings and to go over the citation docket training with the Baltimore City Police.
Understood. And finally, the percentage of citations that are being improper, that are being issued by BPD which don't meet whatever legal litmus test, what is that? Or I guess that's a BPD question. There's some percentage of the citations that are being caught by your internal review?
It's about more than fifty percent of theirs are not legally sufficient.
And BPD agrees with that assessment? And what is the percentage that you're experiencing with other law enforcement agencies?
MTA, maybe one or two percent. Amtrak, zero. MDTA, zero. The other agencies, the Alcohol Tobacco Commission, theirs is zero, but they historically have written citations continuously. As long as I've been a State's Attorney, I have done cases by citation with them. They're pretty uniform in their training and their policy on what needs to be on a citation.
All right. So can we get in writing from BPD to the committee what the plan is to utilize the training that State's Attorney's Office is offering up? Because unfortunately, the training modules that have been provided and administered by BPD don't seem to have the same level of adequacy as the training that the other law enforcement agencies have received from the State's Attorney's Office.
Yes, that's no problem. And I think the other thing for us to highlight is, we're looking to figure out how do we get this into the electronic system as well? How do we, this will help minimize or mitigate some of what we're finding where we're dropping off with some of the rejections. It's happening with the language and how they are transferring the language through the citation and some of those rejections. So one of the things that we're trying to do is work on, how do we get it? We have the E-Tix system, it's electronic, where the officer can go in, it is a little bit more fail-safe, just click on what the offense is and it automatically populates. So that is something that we're working on. It may take some time before we get there. And in the meantime, we'll work with the State's Attorney's Office. That's something I thought that had already occurred when, you know, during our training or for our training. So I'll close the gap on that.
Thank you. And to close out, Mr. Chair, just stating the obvious, BPD is the anomaly here in these data sets. And I would have more reassurance as to the effectiveness of this had BPD taken SAO up on the offer for the training. What I'm hearing today from SAO is that there's an open offer to accommodate BPD and come in and assist with that. And if this was working, I could understand the issue with transferring over to the ERS to get the information and, you know, and it's not an officer error, but unfortunately, this sounds like officer errors that could be corrected. So.
Yes, sir. And I'll check without training because what I believe is that SAO's training was incorporated into our training, but we'll make sure that we close the gap.
Thank you so much, Deputy Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. The other thing, and I don't know what we have by way of data on this, is its impact on complaints in these lower-level crimes. I'm curious for BPD or State's Attorney, whoever may have data to sort of track the progress of this policy and approach. Do we see the complaints associated with the citations that are on the citation docket? Do we see them going down as a result of attempts to implement this policy? So for instance, we know we're not writing many citations yet, but if officers are issuing these warnings, which then results in folks not needing to write citations, are we at least seeing the crime go down?
I wouldn't categorize it maybe just strictly as crime, but maybe the calls for service.
Sure.
That's something that we would definitely have to, you know, do an audit on and do a comparison, some type of assessment to see what our warnings look like, what's our calls for service prior, what does the warnings look like, and has there been a decrease? That would be something that we will have to follow up on.
Yeah. If we could make that an official committee request, just like a comparison of calls for service related to the things on a citation docket before and after the implementation. And I understand there may be a sort of sliding scale of interactions with officers that we may need to account for, but I'll leave it up to you to figure out the time periods that make the most sense for assessing whether or not it has been helpful. So.
Yeah. And also, too, some of it may just be on view in some of those locations. So we may not necessarily have a high volume as well. Like, so that comparison is why I'm saying we'll need to do that assessment. It very well could just be the officer's patrolling is a known location where loitering or something of that effect is happening and now they get out to engage those individuals that are committing that offense, they make a warning to them all or to individuals and then that may just automatically abate what that issue is. So it may not even rise to all of those levels and steps, but it's something that we still can take a look at.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'll talk anecdotally from my experience at a location in my district that had been a real sore spot for pretty much my whole term until maybe Thanksgiving time. We finally saw some improvement there. And I'm not sure if it had anything to do with additional enforcement, whether it was related to citations or officers just having conversations and saying, look, you got to keep it moving or not. But ultimately, what we want to come out of this conversation with is, was this policy worth implementing? Whether or not we fully implemented it or not, did it have any impact on neighborhoods without overpolicing? That's what we need to figure out. Councilman Glover, I understand you have a question?
Yeah, I just had, I just want to piggyback kind of off Councilman Costello, just to ask, was this also offered like to the Baltimore City School Police or was it strictly, or even the Sheriff's Department? I know I'm coming in late, but.
The Baltimore City School Police would mostly be for individuals under the age of eighteen, so they wouldn't be qualified for the criminal citation docket.
Okay. So what about the Sheriff's Department?
I have trained the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office in person. I did, I believe, four or six in-person, small group trainings. Their training consisted of me conducting a PowerPoint presentation, having them also, they had to successfully write a criminal citation before they were considered, finished with their in-service training. They had to properly write a citation and they had to take a post-test after the PowerPoint presentation and writing the citation to make sure that they had everything correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, I know I requested the last public safety hearing that the Baltimore City Public School Police Commander be present and also the sheriff be present so that, you know, it's all hands-on-deck approach. We're going to know what's going on all at the same time. So I don't, I don't see any, I do see the Sheriff's Department's here. Sheriff Cogan, can you come to the front? And just if we have any questions moving forward. Also, request that Baltimore City Public Schools be at the next hearing. Thanks. But you have, just in case we have any questions for you, sir. Just want to make sure you're representing the office. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Casello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back to the data now, past the training piece. So from SAO, ma'am, what was your name again, ma'am?
Mrs. Darrows.
Mrs. Darrows. We met before. Thank you. I apologize. This agency summary on page two, the report run date, February twelfth, this is year-to-date twenty-twenty-four, correct?
I'm sorry?
This report here on.
It goes through January of twenty-twenty-four. Our database was just completed and I just finished.
So this is from inception of the program?
This is inception from the July twenty-twenty-three dockets through the January twenty-twenty-four docket.
All right. So this is.
Although the community service not completed number isn't quite accurate because they have until tomorrow to finish their community service from the January docket. They've accepted, but they haven't yet, they have until tomorrow to complete.
But this is six and a half or seven months worth of data, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so the question for BPD Command, why is the volume of citations issued so low in comparison to the number of officers we have versus these other law enforcement agencies operating in the city?
So, sir, I think that it's still a process for us, right, to issue a citation. Even if we see that individual doing something, we still have other policies that doesn't say as soon as we engage, we're automatically issuing a citation.
Right.
I think the warnings help us a lot. Once we give the warning, explain what's happening, why they're getting the warning, what offense they're committing, that ceases a lot of that activity. Now, what happens is if that individual does not heed that warning and comes back within a period of time and they're doing the same thing again and we reengage, that is when we start to escalate, you know, through our policy to issue the citation.
Very helpful. So two quick follow-up questions. One, the directive has been given from command staff down to issue citations as legally appropriate, consistent with the parameters of the citation docket program? Is that, and that's a priority, correct?
Yes, sir. The PC and the Commissioner and myself, when we address roll call, we're talking about this in the districts.
Got it. And then the second question is the, I lost my train of thought there. Please forgive me. So the, it is a priority. And then the citations that are part of the justification here for why there's a low number of citations being issued is because there's a series of warnings consistent with other criteria and guidance and consent decree, et cetera, which BPD officers are following. Do we have data on the number of warnings that are being issued appropriately?
That's something we would have to follow up on. You know, some of the data that I gave to, I mean, earlier, speaking to, of course, that's just two specific areas in the city, where we do know that most of these nuanced incidents are happening, the loitering, the drinking, urinating, things like that, will be downtown at Fells Point. So it's about seven fifty-seven, I think, is what I reported on, where we have documentation that shows that those warnings abated those, you know, those activities. So I think the other part to it is, we would have to make that comparison, do an audit, do some type of assessment to see, has that changed anything, right? Calls for service may be one way to make that measurement. And then the other, most of these we would expect or that officers are getting on view when they're patrolling around in a community because they're in those locations where it's known for some of this activity to happen, far as the, you know, the loitering, being outside the stores. So I say all of that to say that would be something we would have to follow up on to look at the entire city to see in comparison, how has those warnings really reduced those activities versus us issuing citations?
So presumably, if Person A has issued a citation docket, consistent citation for, say, a violation of Article nineteen subsection twenty-five-two of City Code, which is loitering, presumably, they have received three warnings plus or minus prior to the issuance of that citation, correct?
Possibly.
And so the question is, can you advise us as to what data is available around those warnings prior to citation?
So that's.
I don't expect an answer now.
Yeah, I got you.
I'm saying, can you advise us as to what data?
I got you.
I don't need a number. It's more like, we track this or we don't track that type of thing.
That may be hard to track because again.
And that's okay. Then that's the answer. It's, so I'm not asking, like, if you've issued thirty-seven of these citations, which will hold up in court, and you issued another thirty-seven, which won't, that somehow there's an expectation that, you know, three warnings times seventy-four citations, two-hundred-and-twenty-two warnings exist. I'm not asking for a list of two-hundred-and-twenty-two. I'm just asking what it is that you track. Like, if you can, wherever Graham is, Graham, like, tell me the story behind the data that you're collecting. You understand what I'm saying, right?
Yes, sir.
Does that make, I just want, okay.
Councilman, I also want to just point out one thing that I think is important about the citation docket. Prior to the partnership with the State's Attorney in the prior administration, when that was not an ability to have a citation, it left the police with, in a difficult position when you would warn because they knew, well, what's going to happen if I'm not obeying the warning? So I think what's really important to remember is a lot of this is going to be anecdotal and not necessarily tracked because verbal warnings are obviously verbal warnings and not, they don't go into E-Tix. So I think what's also important, which is great with the partnership with the State's Attorney's Office, is now, these people are aware that a citation can in fact happen. So I think when we are seeing some of that anecdotally, yes, you have some districts that obviously are keeping better track of it when you see like the lower level, like alcohol, okay, we warned them, they left, kind of thing. I think it's also just really important for us all to focus on the fact that, it's the fact that now citations can be issued that is also, I think, a very helpful deterrent for lower-level offenses.
And I'll add to that, to that end, the analysis that I sort of requested before around the difference between calls for service will help us understand with the best data we have whether or not those warnings have had that impact. So I appreciate the questions there. I have one question about the data we have in front of us, and I guess this is for the State's Attorney's Office. The whole idea behind this program is for folks to receive services and we have a citation outcome summary table here. I see community service is one of them. I'm not sure if that is an instance in which we've.
That's the accountability component.
That's accountability. Do we have a count of folks that have received any help or support from the city?
So the crime and the community service and the accountability, we don't necessarily track those that engage in services because it's offered to them and it's not tied to the criminal charge.
Got it.
We have a treatment provider who is a volunteer called the Hope Center. They're located at Lockraven and Twenty-Fifth. They are the treatment providers that come to the court and we offer through them their services. Individuals, we ask them to go step outside and speak to them. We don't ask whether they engaged in services. I'm told through my connections with Hope Center that many people do ask for help. Family members who have accompanied defendants to help to court have asked whether they could also speak to that nonprofit who is willing to work with individuals and help them get services they need. But because we're not tying it to the crime, we're not saying you have to get services, we don't necessarily track it. We just make them available to the defendant and anyone else in the courtroom who wishes to engage in those services.
Got it. So the, the sort of outcomes here are things that they are required as sort of punishment for?
The accountability component is they are performed five hours of community service.
And so I feel like the Hope Center is an opportunity. I think I would ideally, hopefully we could get that data.
They, we don't have an MOU with them. They volunteer to come to the court. They volunteer to sit in the court and they offer people to come speak to them outside of the court process. I don't know that they're tracking exactly who's coming from the court, who's criminally charged, who's coming from the court, and who is just a visitor in the court who is asking to engage in services. It is the only treatment provider that we have available to us at the docket.
I'll make a request then. At the very least, we should ask. I think it's a, because once again, the point here is to prove that if we can connect folks to services, we can get them to more stability and they're not hanging out on the corner or drunk in public or whatever the case is. So if the Hope Center is providing services and hopefully getting people on a better path so that they don't have to have, you know, these sort of interactions with our law enforcement, that's ideal.
I know of two individuals who did agree and asked for services. One individual was struggling with some mental health issues. One individual was struggling with some mental health issues. They helped him get into mental health. They helped him get his health insurance back because he has lost his job. So they went through Maryland Healthcare Access and they worked through getting his health insurance back. He needed employment, so they worked with him and he was able to go, I think, through the Mayor's Office employment, and he was able to get a new job and back on his feet.
Great.
And that's one individual. Another individual recently went to the Hope Center and asked, and they came from the docket, I know them, they came to the docket and they were charged with an alcohol offense from the MTA, but they clearly had a substance abuse issue. And they worked with the Hope Center, and the Hope Center got them engaged in substance abuse treatment. Now, whether they've maintained that or successful in that, I don't know. I know that they did reach out to the Hope Center and that the Hope Center was able to get them assessed and to get them into a treatment program.
That, that, that's exactly, I think, what we want to know about.
That is our goal.
Yeah. If we could simply request of the Hope Center, you know, folks that they get their primary interaction from the Citation Docket process, I think that would be really helpful in understanding as people matriculate through this, this sort of system, how many actually at least are notified that help is available for whatever issue they may be dealing with.
So I do make an announcement at every docket at the front of the courtroom for all defendants, saying the Hope Center is here. It's not tied to your criminal charge. They're here to offer services. If you need help, they're willing to step outside and speak to you and set up appointment and engage in with whatever help you need. It's free of charge, and you're welcome to go to the Hope Center on Lockraven. It's open. If you're homeless, you can go there. You can get a meal. You can get a shower. You can do your laundry.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the Sheriff Department, can you come up for one second? I just want to ask you a couple of questions in reference to the, I know we talked last time about recruitment and what's going on over in the Sheriff Department. Can you just give me a synopsis of what's taking place as far as recruitment over in the Sheriff Department?
So I'm sorry that the car took to your last sentence.
So the recruitment process, what's going on with you guys at this point from the last time we had a conversation?
Yes. So thanks for letting me speak on that. First, I want to acknowledge the Baltimore Police Department, which accepted 10 sheriff candidates into their academy yesterday. I think it's great that they did that. They, they really stepped up. I called the Commissioner. He immediately put me in touch with the head of the academy, and we were able to make that happen. Unfortunately, the reason we had to make that happen was because we had an issue with the state-run Training Commission Academy where they really moved the goalpost on their physical fitness test and excluded half of my employees that were physically fit, had been in a fitness program, and it was very problematic for me. They decided to raise the standards on their, on their physical fitness test, and in doing so, the people that we had given physical fitness tests to and that actually passed the Maryland State Police Physical Fitness Test were excluded. And it just happened that the people who were excluded, of my employees that we knew were in shape, were all the women that we sent out there, right, and, and people of color. And so it really put a bad taste in my mouth why they would do something like that in this national police shortage, why we would raise the bar and raise the goalpost. We had sent someone there in 2003 to the same academy. She was a female employee. Her final passing score in the 2003 class would have failed her out of even going into this class. And just last week, you know, she applied a tourniquet on a juvenile who had been shot and presumably saved his life. And so to make decisions like that, to keep people out just for these physical standards that were arbitrarily, like I said, this goalposts caused me not to want to send anyone there. And so I'm concerned about it. We're reaching out to state level to deal with it. But our friends at the Baltimore City Police Academy were very gracious, and, you know, our qualified employees are now there. And that's probably a good thing to have the Baltimore Sheriff's Office and the Baltimore Police Training side by side because we are an allied agency. So I'm happy about that. You know, reaching out again to, at the state level to try to, to fix this issue, but it, you know, we're talking about recruitment. That was problematic for us.
So we have, have you already reached out to the state or you're waiting for a response from the state?
So we have a letter that we're sending to the state today, and we will give them an opportunity to fix it. So I don't want to talk too much about it, right? Because I don't believe that leadership in the state has had ample opportunity to address this issue. But again, I want to thank the, the Police Department for, for, for being there for us, and that's, that's what we do in long...
Okay. That process is a long process. Can you let us know over here? Let me know particularly so we can kind of expedite it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Appreciate it.
And I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak on that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Hope Center information that you were provided, or that you had provided, they are a service provider?
They are a nonprofit who volunteers to come to our docket.
Okay. And that's through a relationship the State's Attorney has with the Hope Center?
It is a relationship that I developed through previous courts, their employees. Their director used to work with us for the prostitution docket. And they like to help individuals that are homeless and have mental health issues. So when we had no treatment providers available to us this summer, I reached out and asked whether they were willing to come and talk to individuals and offer services because we would like to provide services to individuals on the Citation Docket, and we did not have any agencies available to us to give us those services. I requested that they come, and they have come to every single docket every month since July. They sent one individual, and he sits in the back and he engages people in conversation.
This is the Hope Center person?
I'm sorry?
Who is this one person? I don't, I don't need the name. I'm sorry. They're with Hope Center?
They're with the Hope Center.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Their case manager with the Hope Center comes to the courtroom every docket and has been at every docket since July, and they engage and talk to individuals engaged in services. Now, I can tell you, when we offer services, a lot of defendants say, I don't need anything and walk out the door, which there's not much we can offer if they don't want to engage or even speak to anyone about whether they have services that could help them.
Mr. Chair, I get, if it's appropriate now, I got some questions related to this, what services MONC's partner organizations provide as part of that, or should we wait till after MONC?
We can discuss it now since it's relevant to the topic.
So, or actually, ma'am, if you could come back up, or, hold on, or Hassan. So do we have service providers that MONC works with that are engaging with, with folks who are part of the Citation Docket program?
I would defer to Deputy Solomon.
Deputy Solomon, okay. Deputy, good to see you today, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Good to see you, too. At the moment, we have a draft of a MOU with MONC that has been submitted to MONC, I believe, the end of June.
You said June?
Yes.
Of '23?
Yes. That, that draft has not been finalized as of yet. My understanding is that it is to be reviewed by Legal. I did have a brief conversation with Madam Executive Director this afternoon. I introduced myself, and we will be having conversations, further conversations about the MOU.
And that MOU presumably outlines the terms of MONC and MONC's partner organizations' engagement with individuals that are subject to the Citation Docket program?
Yes. It outlines the responsibilities of the State's Attorney's Office as well as MONC in reference to the Citation Docket.
And are MONC's partner organizations now providing services to individuals who are subject to the Citation Docket program or were held up until the MOU is executed?
Until the MOU is executed, yes.
MONC, so we've had a draft of the MOU since June. Can we speak to that?
Absolutely. Stephanie Mavron is Director of MONC. If you recall, the end of June is around the time we had a leadership, leadership transition in our agency. I have reviewed that draft. We have also had Legal review the draft. The last time I reviewed the draft, most of the services that are outlined are specifically employment services and ones that I expect we'd be actively partnering with Mayor's Office of Employment Development on. If there's an opportunity to add additional services into that mix, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I think we may want to bring in MoED as an official partner rather than us being like a middleman to route, so to speak, but I'm committed to getting that MOU signed, and as I made the commitment, we'll make sure we get that done.
Why has it taken eight months?
I would say it's something that came in right around the time of the leadership transition, so it's something I had to take a look at. I would say the other piece is that we needed to make sure that we understood the services that we were being asked to provide and that we had the capacity to take them on. I'm confident after reviewing that we do, but there were conversations that we needed to have with Legal and with MoED. There certainly has been a delay, but I'm committed to making sure we get it done because we want to partner with the, the State's Attorney's Office in this way, and we're happy to accept any referrals as we do on a regular basis, you know, via victim services and via any other referrals from the team. I don't think we need a MOU to begin accepting referrals, but we want to make sure the process is in place and that we have roles and responsibilities clarified.
And Deputy Solomon, what are those services that your office is seeking MONC to work with its partner organizations to provide individuals who are subject to the Citation Docket program?
Most of the services that we originally discussed pertain to job training and assistance.
No, I would say most of those services are ones we don't offer directly, but we'd be actively partnering with MoED and may have some opportunities through work that we've developed with them for specific placements that MONC may refer to MoED to be able to, to refer these individuals as well.
At what point in the process did MONC engage with MoED to seek support?
I believe there's been an initial conversation that John from my team has had, but we're actively working with MoED to develop transitional employment, both for GPRS participants and others. So this is part of an ongoing conversation we've been having with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development.
I appreciate the context you provided, but my specific question was, when did this reach out from MONC to MoED occur?
Yeah, I'll defer to John because he's the one that made the reach out.
Thank you, Director.
My recollection is the initial conversations with MoED on this may have been with our former Community Engagement Associate Director, which would have been, I believe, March or thereabouts in the spring, initial conversations, I believe. I know my outreach to them, my conversation was over the summertime, and then...
How did that outreach occur in March when the Citation Docket program didn't exist?
Then, that's a good, so that was not, the conversations, that would definitely mean that my outreach to them, my conversations with them was the first time the Citation Docket would have come up then.
And your outreach to MoED was this summer?
Yes.
So the, it sounds like there's three agencies involved, MONC, MoED, and LAW, is that correct?
I would say, I mean, LAW was pulled in to consult on the MOU. I would say the agencies involved are MoED, MONC in terms of referrals, and obviously SAO with the Citation Docket.
So is the holdup with MONC or with MoED?
The holdup on the MOU?
Well, yes. That's, that's what's driving the entire line of questioning is the fact that we're eight months in and we don't have an executed MOU. So the question is, why don't we have an executed MOU? And the response is that we're all working with LAW and MoED and MONC, and LAW sounds like a technical administrative shared services provider in this whole scenario because they're the legal experts. So that leaves either MONC or MoED. So who is responsible for the delay in getting an executed MOU? Is it MONC or MoED?
The, so it's absolutely not in Legal's court. The MOU was given from SAO to MONC, so it's in our court to execute it. As Director Mavrona said, the conversation that still has not been, I would say, completed or, or the, what's still on the table with respect to the MOU is the parameters of MoED's involvement.
And...
But through this process, we've been establishing a referral process with MoED so that we can refer any participants we have at the highest risk to them. So I would expect that some of the folks that we'd be getting referred from the Citation Docket could go into that pipeline. We've been actively building that out in this time. So the conversations have been ongoing. I think when I assumed this role in interim, seeing an MOU that referred MONC services just in the realm of employment made me say, before I can sign this and say what MoED's going to do, we need to make sure they're on board and this is something they can accommodate. And then if they can't take it on, we need to find additional partners at the community-based level that we can route these folks to.
So if I may summarize, it sounds like your office is building a framework to be able to work on and execute an MOU. Is that correct?
We're building out an actual referral process with MoED to be able to refer participants for a range of transitional employment or other kind of training opportunities. That's what we're building. I think the question of the MOU is separate, and I've taken up a new review of that within the past few weeks, and, and I'm comfortable getting us to a place where we can sign it. And I'm also committing to the State's Attorney's Office that if there are individuals that I haven't received notice, that there are individuals that will be ready to be referred our way, but should there be an individual following this hearing, we'll work with that referral as we already partner with the agency. But I do want to make sure the MOU is in place because that's one of the ways we ensure there's some systemic and sustainability pieces behind this and not just, you know, us doing that as individuals. I'm committed to getting it done, and we want to partner with the State's Attorney's Office.
Councilman...
I'm almost done. If you could, I promise you, I'm wrapping up in two final questions. So again, just to summarize, it sounds like you're doing some legwork, but we're trying to get the MOU executed, right?
Yes. We are trying to get the MOU executed, and, and I'll just add, on the piece, I'm talking about the referral process for employment with MoED, we're actually working on a separate MOU to govern that process. That is like imminently approaching signature. I believe we just finalized legal language there. That's going to be the framework essentially that will help us make those referrals effectively.
And Mr. Chair, here's my final question, two-part question to wrap this up, as I promised you, Mr. Chair. Deputy Solomon, has MONC been communicating throughout the last eight months their efforts in terms of the status of this, to, to get this to the finish line?
I haven't had any recent conversations. I think the last email that we sent may have been the end of January, but since the city council hearing, end of August, we have not had any communication. And at that particular time, the state began to focus on Hope Center.
So no communication in five months? No written communication in five months, Deputy?
Not that I recall.
You have something to add? Or I don't know, I thought you hit your button. I didn't know if, got, yeah, got it. So last question. Deputy Solomon, in your estimation, has the mayor and the administration, based on your experience that we've talked about today with BPD and MONC, been a partner in the Citation Docket program to the State's Attorney's Office?
I'm sorry. What was your question again?
Based on your experiences working with MONC and BPD, as we've discussed today, in your estimation, has the mayor and the administration been a partner to the SAO in executing the Citation Docket program?
I believe that attempts have been made. I think that all agencies, we could make a better effort to make sure that the Citation Docket is actually a viable docket.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. I want to put a cap in on this. If we can get a commitment from MONC on a turnaround time for this, for this MOU, how much time do you need until we can settle this matter?
Based on the fact that we already have initial feedback from Legal, it may take us a few weeks to work that through with the State's Attorney's Office, but I'll make sure that this is prioritized on my team within the next two weeks. And I would say no later than...
End of month?
I would say end of the month to resolve comments, if not have the document signed. I think we're there in some of the conversations we've been having... I think we're there and some of the conversations we've been having in the interim are going to help support the effort.
Okay. If you could circle back with me as chair by March 1st on where we are with this, hopefully we are, we are settled. That'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just to close out real quick, state's attorney wanted to express his apologies for not being here, but he sent his leadership. He wanted to make sure it was clear that he appreciates you and the councils trying to make sure that the Citation Docket is a success. This is a staple of his administration. He made a promise to the voters of the city, we will not go backwards at all. We will hold low-level offenses accountable. But he has a very great relationship. He wants the council to know that his relationship with this command staff has been like out of sight since day one. They meet every month, so he wanted to make it clear that they're going to work together to make sure that, you know, the citizens of the city are safe, just to, so we're clear on that.
Absolutely. And I think you guys get tough questions from this committee all the time. It is the nature of the job. We get tough questions from our constituents all the time, so naturally you will hear what we hear. And so, I hope it's clear that through all this, we are trying to problem solve and we want to see, hopefully, at the very least, an honest effort towards seeing this, this policy effort carried out. So, I think we have our next steps on this matter. I want to move on. There was one last thing and maybe we end up not digging into it too much, and I imagine this may be a matter better suited for the Finance and Performance Committee, but there was an article a few weeks ago about overtime in the police department on the audit. An audit of police overtime in which, you know, the audit explained that there were a number of issues with the amount of overtime and our controls. And I'm curious how the department has begun thinking about making sure that we establish procedures and controls to make sure that when we do issue overtime, we do so correctly and, you know, all of our commanders and, you know, managing staff know how to do so appropriately. So, I want to hand that off to the department to answer that question.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Charlotte Graham and I'd be happy to answer that question. So, I just want to preface this with this, the audit period was at the go-live of Workday. So, it was basically from December 20th, 2020, and took the period of the go-live of Workday. And there was monumental changes that happened at that period. The employees went from the timekeepers doing everything to now the employees doing their own timekeeping. So, basically employee self-service went to the managers not doing anything in timekeeping to now the managers were also approving everything and verifying everything. At the same time, we put a lot of new controls in place. We made the employees punch in, punch out. We required all these additional controls with overtime. We required them to put in a cost center, which tells us where was the overtime worked, and an activity which tells us what were you doing on the overtime? Was it related to arrests? Was it related to drafting? So that we have transparency on that data. So, these were monumental changes and at the same time, the workday system was still being coded. So, the employees hadn't been trained. So, the audits were skewed because we were going through such a shift in our payroll. So, today, the trends that you saw in the audit don't exist. So, for instance, in the audit, they said that 30% of our employees did not put in a cost center and activity code. Well, that's down to about 8% today. So, what are we doing? So, we are training our employees, we're going through our policies, making sure the policies are strong. We are reviewing this information at ComStat, we're holding people accountable, we are doing audits, developing a new audit plan. In addition to that, there have been PIB referrals anytime we've witnessed a problem with payroll, but there will be more policy around PIB referrals, both in the audit and in our policy documents. And we take these things seriously. We want to make sure that we are transparent with how we spend our overtime, that we can evaluate that ourselves and make sure that we're getting a return on investment with our overtime. And as you know, a lot of the overtime is related to the high vacancies and the staffing shortages.
Yeah, and, you know, I also want to be clear here. I think we all appreciate with staff shortages and the current capacity needs for the department that there is a real need for overtime. I think it's also just really important that we have the proper controls and we are using the overtime in the places and the times when we actually need it and can always have the ability to go back and be confident in that effort. So, you know, like I said, this is a matter that's probably better served to be flushed out more completely in the Finance and Performance Committee, but being, we do talk about operations being that overtime is right now our biggest plug for some of the shortages that we see in the department. I want to make sure that we're staying on top of this issue. You know, I also know that Workday has been a gift and a curse in the rollout. There's a lot to be learned and identified in the execution of these large programs and so there are growing pains in those efforts, but I do want to make sure once again that we are, you know, we're being very thoughtful about training, you know, processes and otherwise when it comes to spending and overtime. It's historically been an issue in the department and we've made leaps and bounds in that effort and I don't want to slide backwards, that's all.
Yeah. And so, you know, the workday system has allowed us to develop a lot of internal controls that we didn't have before, but because of such monumental change, there's a, there's a change management process where you can put the systems and controls in place, but it takes a little bit of time for the employees to learn those changes. And we are retraining everybody as well, making sure they know all the policies around the payroll manual, all the restrictions and what tools they have to check that people are following the policies.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions. Councilwoman Porter.
I did have one question related to the labor hours that you just mentioned. How are you all leveraging that overtime with inter-agency agreements with other public service or public agencies like the sheriff's department, school police? Are you all leveraging their additional labor hours into the overtime at all?
So, we do have a couple of grants where we have partnered with the sheriff and other agencies to help us accomplish the mission, but there's none of that on the general fund. It's specific to the nature of the grant that we have.
And, I'm sorry, maybe my question wasn't phrased appropriately. So, I'm looking for if we are leveraging those other public safety agencies, there should be a reduction in the overtime of labor hours in the police department.
We're not doing it with the main part of our overtime, which is staffing shortages and the second main component is the investigative overtime as well, which in a way is staffing shortages as well. So, those core functions of overtime, the majority of our overtime is being done by our employees.
And this may sound like an elementary question, what's the, what's the overall purpose of said grants then? So, said grants are to bring in more of those in other public safety agencies to assist with the operations of BPD, but we're not seeing a reduction in the labor hour, the labor hours for overtime? I'm not familiar with that. You see where I'm going?
Yeah, I do. So, a perfect example is we have some state money that's to address warrants. So, it's a grant that's very specific and the overtime is specific to warrants. So, it's not helping us with the core operations, right? You know, drafting because we don't have enough people to answer calls for service or investigations. The grants are very specific to a specific purpose.
Are there any overtime hours associated with the warrants?
Yes, yes.
So, if there are labor hours associated with the warrants and the grant that you just mentioned was to substantiate the labor overtime hours for warrants, there should be a reduction there?
Yes, and I know some of this is operationally, we've been trying to, you know, address some challenges with the warrants, so that specific money wasn't necessarily for the normal basis of the organization and the operations, it was to address specific challenges and with the warrants.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I want to turn it over to the second half of this meeting and that is our presentation from MONC and they're going to walk us through some of the developments in Safe Streets and Director Mefronis, floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Conway, Councilwoman Porter and members of the committee. My name's Stephanie Mefronis. Here is the Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Go to the next slide, please. Our presentation this afternoon has three parts. We're going to start with just a few recent updates. We'll spend the bulk of our presentation providing an update on Safe Streets as requested by the committee. I'll also provide a brief progress overview of the agency year-to-date and given that we're just past the two-and-a-half-year mark on the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan implementation, that's a little more than halfway through the five-year trajectory of that plan. We can go to the next slide. All right. BPD mentioned the first one. We announced last week that we've officially expanded the Group Violence Reduction Strategy into the central. One of the important things I want to note, not only did researchers find that that was associated with significant reductions in group violence, we also saw a significant reduction in carjackings and so seeing additional positive externalities from the strategy. The picture that you see in the top, this is from the launch and graduation of our first cohort with the University of Baltimore officially welcomed this urban conflict manager certification program. Excited to partner with the Schaefer Center here. This has been a really meaningful opportunity for the Safe Street staff, the initial cohort of 20 that went through this and is in the vein of leadership development and continued support for that staff. We also recently announced the third Neighborhood Policing Plan Pilot Neighborhood. And with that, we can turn to the next part of the presentation around Safe Streets. Okay. Going to dig into some context and history. We'll talk a little bit about updates around Beller Edison site, data, both outputs and outcomes, and then sharing some key program updates. One thing I wanted to start out with, just because sometimes we get the question, what is Safe Streets responsible for? What is their charge? This is an evidence-based public health program with a focus on reducing gun violence. And I mention that because we'll look at some metrics when we get to the outputs and outcomes section that go beyond gun violence, but that are important measures of public safety in different communities. But their job is to mediate brewing conflicts and hopefully stop violence from occurring before it even happens. Okay. Can go to the next slide here. Just to talk a little bit about structure and context, it looks like the formatting on this slide got a little messed up, but that's okay. This outlines the MONC staff support that's in place to partner with our Safe Streets staff. Again, Safe Streets workers are not employees of city government, they are not employees of law enforcement, they're employed by either Life Bridge Center for Hope or Catholic Charities. Catholic Charities provides day-to-day administration for four of our 10 Safe Street sites. Life Bridge Health provides operation for six of our sites. And within the MONC team, our community outreach liaisons, our CVI Operations Manager, the CVI Deputy Director position, which is currently vacant, we're actively recruiting for this role, and MONC's Gun Violence Prevention Associate Director, provide a lot of day-to-day support to Life Bridge and Catholic Charities that in part looks like technical assistance at the site level, helping with things from data to otherwise. We also are responsible for standard operations management and administrative support and making sure that we're maintaining the integrity of this evidence-based model. We can go to the next slide. Okay. Just some context and history, I won't stay here long, but just to kind of bring up to speed on the charge that we had from the mayor. Early at the start of the agency in January 2021, one of the mayor's first charges to MONC was the task of conducting an internal evaluation of Safe Streets with an understanding that there were things we could do better, there were ways to strengthen the program. By April 2022, we released a public kind of vision and plan for what that work would look like with a focus on strengthening that work that's available on our website for anyone that wants to read it and look at the data there. That also included the outcomes of that internal evaluation. By July of 2022, we developed the first standard operations manual to govern not just all 10 Safe Street sites, but also other community violence intervention partners, including our hospital systems. And then by January of last year, administrative site transitions were complete. And so, January 2023 is when we saw some Safe Street sites that were previously administered by other community-based organizations transition to either Catholic Charities or Life Bridge Center for Hope, who are now our two strategic partners in this effort. Next slide. All right. I'll provide an update here on the Beller Edison Safe Street site. As a matter of status, the Beller Edison Safe Street site is temporarily inactive. This means there is also a temporary pause in canvassing at this time. On October 26, 2023, Life Bridge Health was alerted to an execution of a search warrant involving the site location. Life Bridge Health immediately informed MONC, at which point we were engaged in the situation and, you know, began working together to take some action. At this time, our understanding is that this is still an ongoing investigation and so there's not a lot of detail that we have, but I do feel confident standing here and saying that there's not an indication at this time that Safe Streets Baltimore as a program is the subject of that investigation. We don't, you know, have additional information, but we did make the decision that we needed to take a temporary pause in the site. And a big reason for that was we only have one active staff member on site, not safe levels for canvassing, we don't have leadership at the site. And so, as we go to the next slide, those are two of our key metrics that are going to be needed for us to reopen. One of the things we're doing to make sure that this is not, we know the Beller Edison site is something that's historically been very important to the Beller Edison community. It's been important to us that they don't just feel like that presence is gone. And so, our Community Violence Intervention Team and Community Engagement Teams are partnering with Living Classrooms Foundation, Operation Respond, and also Life Bridge for an activation of a neighborhood stabilization response. We know there's been a few violent incidents in the community, including one involving a 17-year-old, and so we want to make sure that we continue to have a presence and stay laser-focused on this hiring sprint that we're currently in. To that end, we can go to the next slide. This is our, I don't think we've actually shared this information before with the city council, but it's something as we go through this kind of hiring push right now that we're spending a lot of time on. This is something that Baltimore Police Department has also been a very strong partner to us on. You could see right now across all 10 of our sites what the vacancies are at different levels. The Site Director and Violence Prevention Coordinator, these are typically the positions we're looking to as leadership positions at our sites. And then Site Supervisor and Violence Interrupter, really critical positions for making sure the work's happening on the ground. We've taken over the past few months, really a coordinated effort since November to make sure we have a strong process in place with the Baltimore Police Department. They play a role in the vetting. It is a multi-step process and one that involves a number of checks and balances. We got to make sure we're getting the right folks to do this work and it's not just work that anyone can do. And so, we're continuing to make this recruitment, vetting and hiring push through the end of the first quarter and we're beginning to see some, some outcomes from that. We can go to the next slide. So, between these numbers, you'll see they're not from all time, but really go back to November 28th when we kind of reset our list that we were looking for with vetting with the Baltimore Police Department. You can see on the left-hand side, the number of applications that were submitted by prospective candidates to our Safe Streets community-based organizations. From there, candidate names are submitted by MONC to BPD for a preliminary round of vetting, looking at the conversion rate of how many are cleared by BPD and how many we initially send to them. It looks like around 60% or so kind of make it through to that next phase of the process. We'll see MONC vetted, that refers to a process that our team is doing out in the community, making sure that if someone's saying they want to do this job, they can walk the community, they know it, they have credibility and they have a good reputation. So, as we vet, we clear candidates, our team's actively working through that process for the 43 that are coming into the MONC vetting process. We have interview panels that have been ongoing and set up and have a few candidates hired, but Beller Edison rebuild is at the top of that list. We can go to the next slide. I won't walk through all of this and I know it looks a little funny on the screen right now. This outlines the hiring process. So, I mentioned the different levels of this, the role that MONC plays, the role that our Safe Streets community-based organizations play and the role that BPD plays in this process. And so, I think to date, we've been able to clarify any outstanding issues and make sure that that process is seamless, so we don't have candidates waiting in a queue for a long time before we can interview them. A few key high-level outputs and outcomes that I want to share just about the program overall, some recent information. We want to, sorry about that. We want to share the good news that there were no homicides in any of our Safe Streets catchment areas during the months of November and December 2023. It was one of the things I was seeing on the reports. We produce weekly reports to manage the work of the Safe Streets program and make sure that everything looks good from a data perspective and there were no homicides, which is something to celebrate and I think a testament to the work that's being done. Safe Streets Penn North achieved 3... Safe Streets Penn North achieved 365 days with no homicides. I actually had a chance to address some of the Safe Streets staff today. We're doing the first-ever retreat of all of our Safe Streets staff, really to make sure we're getting ideas from the frontline about how to strengthen the program. In 2023, our staff recorded 1,444 mediations. And through February 12th of this year, so far, our staff have recorded 110 mediations. One thing I'll say about the mediation numbers and why we're also focusing on this hiring push is that we're always going to be limited in the amount of mediations we can conduct if our sites are not fully staffed. And so that's why we're prioritizing staffing right now while we continue to train and do everything we need to do to make sure data is validated. All right. So I mentioned earlier that the staff of Safe Streets are responsible for intervening in gun violence, not necessarily responsible for general violent crime or property crime. But I'm including these metrics here just so we can get a deeper picture of what's happening within the communities in our Safe Streets catchment zones. Safe Streets saw a drop in homicides. We did see an uptick in shootings and violent crime when comparing 2023 to 2022. In all catchment areas combined, we saw a 22% decline in homicides for 2023 compared to 2022, but an increase in shootings of 27%. Overall, violent crime increased 4%. This includes homicide, shooting, rape, aggravated assault, and robbery. We did see a decline in total yearly mediations. I just addressed some of the staffing issues. We think that that's going to change as we get more staff in the queue. And I'll also add, when it comes to homicide and non-fatal shootings, yes, the year-over-year comparison, it does tell us something. It gives us some important information to consider. But one thing that these numbers do not capture, and that I don't believe we have a great way of capturing, are the homicides and non-fatal shootings that didn't occur because incidents were intervened in prior to occurring. So we don't ever really get that counterfactual, but we absolutely want to understand what's happening year-over-year for the program. All right. The next two slides break down homicide and shooting trends. Our key outcome measure by Safe Streets site catchment areas, comparing 2023 to 2022. Five sites saw a decline in homicides, Beller Edison, Belvedere, Cherry Hill, Park Heights, and Penn North. All of those sites, except for the Cherry Hill site, also had a drop in shootings. The numbers in red, the second column, are sites that saw an increase. And I'll note just that the Brooklyn numbers here, they do, of course, include the numbers from the mass shooting incident. So you'll see a very high number there for shootings specifically. In this slide, you know, we've still seen homicides and shootings declining in 2024 year-to-date in Brooklyn, Franklin Square, and Woodburn McCabe. Still obviously early in the year, but something we're focusing on very intently. Brooklyn, Franklin Square, and Woodburn McCabe saw this decline. Brooklyn and Franklin Square have also seen a decline in shootings. Year-over-year, there have been no homicides this year in any of the sites, but for one in Cherry Hill and two in Beller Edison. No sites have had a shooting this year, except for one in Woodburn, one in Cherry Hill, and three in Beller Edison. The last column, where you'll see P365, it's showing the number of incidents over the previous 365 days from February 12, 2023 to February 12, 2024. This is one of the metrics that we're constantly monitoring on a weekly basis to know which sites have gone 365 days without a homicide or a shooting. And then I'll just say, Belvedere had the lowest number of incidents over the last 365 days with one homicide and three shootings. Okay. Just wrapping up here, and this is not showing up at all on the screen. But happy to... Is it showing up okay in your packet? Okay. Just to point out a couple things by way of where we stand in the year. I mentioned at the top that we're just over the halfway mark of implementation of the five-year Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan. We still have a lot of work to do, but I'm proud of the foundation and the work that my team has been doing and continues to do. This progress overview is meant to really outline some of where we've come from. And you can see as we go year-to-year, foundational year, framing year to securing year, that there was a lot we had to build from the ground up. And as we get further into our cadence, we expect to see more of these things highlighted, from re-establishing the CJCC to launching Sidestep, to scaling GVRS, to publishing the first evaluation of Safe Streets since the program expanded. This is just some of the work that we've been doing, but we are showing no signs of stopping, and we have a lot left to do. With that, I think we can go to the end of the presentation, just because it's not showing up nicely there. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate you guys have been really busy on the Safe Streets front lately and, you know, some for good, some for bad. I'm curious for... You mentioned in Beller Edison that Operation Respond has stepped in to help out. Fortunately, I had an opportunity to go check out Operation Respond a couple of weeks ago, and they're doing some really awesome work. And I think it got my mind running about a number of conversations that you and I have had personally about Safe Streets and the model. And one of the questions I get frequently from, you know, leaders in my district in the Woodburn McCabe area have been around support services. And the idea, of course, behind Operation Respond is to flat-out just create those relationships and provide those services regardless of the impetus of a shooting. Safe Streets, as you're of course aware and folks here are aware, the work is always ongoing, but the real work kind of begins after a shooting and, you know, responding so that that shooting doesn't return to another shooting or wrath of additional violence. I'm curious how we've thought about Safe Streets' role in expansion of services or connecting to services and what resources those responders can be before shootings ever occur.
Sure, I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to Crystal Miller, our Gun Violence Prevention Associate Director, to add anything. I think this is one of the key reasons why we're taking this community violence intervention ecosystem approach. We know, and this is a conversation we've had, right? I think for all of us who have understood the Safe Streets model for a long time, clearly it's powerful work, and clearly sometimes there haven't historically always been the connections to services or even awareness of where folks can be referred for certain kinds of matters, be it housing, be it mental health or otherwise. That's something that we want to make sure is changed, and that all of the resources that we have can be collectively shared and that those referrals can be made. I'll let Crystal talk more to how we're thinking about it, but just to say, Operation Respond is one of these initiatives that essentially is an outgrowth of Safe Streets in a way. I mean, you have a leader who comes out of that site, who has a lot of credibility in the community, who saw that there was a need for services. And so really to have that intentional focus on East Baltimore, Beller Edison, McEldery Park, it makes a difference. And so we want to do more of that kind of connective work, and we think that Monty can play the role as a connector where those relationships don't currently exist. But I'll turn over to Crystal.
Thank you, Director Mavronis. So what I'll add to what the Director shared is that with the CVI ecosystem, we have the opportunity of connecting all of the programs and partners that make up that ecosystem, including Safe Streets, where there's opportunities to refer participants or highest individuals, those who may be involved in mediation or an incident, and connecting them to resources. And so one of the things that we'll be building out in the coming months is a referral system for the CVI ecosystem, but also what I'm calling the CVI network, where we're connecting those programs and partnerships that make up the ecosystem as well as, or programs that are outside of the ecosystem that are doing work in the communities that we're serving to bring everyone together to talk about the work they're doing, so programs know who to go to for referrals and to connect people to those resources and services that they need so that we're not just working in silos, we're not just having programs, and we have a true sense of the ecosystem.
Thank you. You know, once again, I think in my mind, I think the logic behind Safe Streets is really good. You know, of course intervene before violence turns into more violence. But I think increasingly, as we sort of squeeze at this problem, we're going to receive less juice. And as we think about how to get ahead of this problem, it is the services, it is the resources, it's the job training, it's the CBT, it's getting ahead of these problems before they result in the shooting to begin with that I think ultimately will probably be the Safe Streets 2.0 of sorts. So I appreciate you guys thinking about those issues, and I want to, you know, think about how we can continue to build into those efforts as we think about capacity. And for my second question on Safe Streets, I appreciated the breakdown you provided around vacancies and hiring. Of course, capacity is always hindered when we have vacancies. So I'm curious, do we have a breakdown by site? And, you know, anecdotally or with whatever insight you have, have these vacancies disproportionately affected some sites over others that we're aware of?
We do have a breakdown of vacancies by site, and it's a tool that we're using to really meticulously track our progress so that we can ensure we're making progress week-to-week on hiring and recruitment. But Crystal, did you want to speak to that specifically?
Sure. Just to add on, I think to answer the second part of your question, yes, there's some sites are more impacted and that's determined on what positions are open versus what positions are filled. And so if there are more violence interrupter positions opens, that definitely impacts the work because these are the on-the-ground positions that are intervening and mediating the conflicts. And so as we're going through this hiring sprint, we are ranking those sites that have those leadership gaps or violence interrupter gaps. It's a higher priority to make sure we're intentionally focusing our efforts to fill those positions and then proceeding through the process with all of the remaining sites that have vacancies as well.
Yeah, I think, you know, of course, and I appreciate that notion that those violence interrupters, those folks on the ground have probably the greatest impact on our ability to interrupt violence, of course. So, you know, as we think about that, if there's anything we can do in sharing the job postings or otherwise, or please...
Yeah, we actually, I think tomorrow, we're planning to... We'll be sending out an email blast from the agency that includes some of the current listings for our Safe Streets positions, not just promoting positions we have at Monty, but really making sure we're lifting up some of those partner opportunities. So we're certainly still seeing people apply, and I think with some of the work that we've been doing with BPD to close the amount of time it takes to get through that vetting process, that's going to help us make sure that we preserve candidates who are good prospective candidates for the job, who can then be locked in for work.
Yeah, and I want to encourage you guys as well. I don't know if you guys are... You guys are probably doing this, but if you're not, I would encourage you to look at what it takes. You know, that retention rate is important because every time we lose somebody, it's really hard to replace them. So I encourage you, where possible, to look at retention and those efforts. I want to acknowledge Councilman Cohen, who's joined the meeting and has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and apologies for tardiness. Thank you, Director Mavronis, and all the folks that are here. I want to ask two questions. One, a conversation you and I have had in the past, but about supporting the emotional and mental health needs of Safe Streets employees, much like other first responders like BPD. It's a really traumatizing, re-traumatizing job, and, you know, we need our workforce to be whole. So I know in the past, you all have done some work with Sage Wellness around trauma-informed care and making sure the staff is good, but I wanted to first ask about that as my first question.
Thanks, Councilman. Yeah, this is really important, not just to Monty, but to the mayor, both wellness of our staff who are taking on that trauma on the front lines, but as well as their professional development and opportunities to be able to grow from potentially a frontline violence intervention job into a position of leadership or into a different kind of realm in another organization, maybe. There's lots of people we've seen matriculate through Safe Streets who then go on to other types of roles that maybe are not as on the front line of that outreach, but that leverage that experience. And so as far as ongoing mental health support, Catholic Charities clinical side is an entity that we're working with for providing support to all Safe Streets staff across all the sites, not just the sites that they work with. And so we have that relationship on deck, and that's a relationship that we provide some funding support for. That team actually just spoke today to the... To all of the Safe Streets staff across all 10 sites at the retreat that we're having, and so really making sure that we keep that at the top of our agenda, that their mental wellbeing is important and that they can't do their jobs effectively if they're not whole themselves. So that's something that we're going to continue to invest in and support.
Great. No, I appreciate that and look forward to partnering with you all on trauma-informed care for Monty at some point, not too, in the not-too-distant future. And you kind of answered my second question, or at least started to go there in terms of, you know, thinking about Safe Streets as a really important and good job, but probably not one that we need everyone to turn into a career, knowing that it is really hard on someone's physical and mental health, knowing that, you know, I think we want folks to continue to grow in their career and in their identity. And so I am curious sort of if you could elaborate on what that looks like? Like, how are we building pipelines for folks to start at Safe Streets and then go back to school? Get an education or go into the workforce in some other sort of way so that we're, you know, supporting our people beyond that first job?
Yeah, I think that's spot-on with how we're working to approach it as well. We're still in the midst of building out that pipeline, but we've had some good developments as of late. So I'll allow Crystal to speak to the work her team's been doing there.
Thank you. So we are adamant about having a five-year trajectory for Safe Streets staff where they're not staying in one position for too long, and we are developing pipelines for them to matriculate into new positions within the program or to move out of positions into new roles. We have had staff members who've acquired their CDLs, and so they've moved out of their position into a role to utilize that certification. So this is part of that work and opening up opportunities to take trainings, various training opportunities. I will say, an example of that is the program with University of Baltimore for the Urban Conflict Manager Certification that we've recently launched, where we're opening opportunities to professionalize the work that violence interrupters are doing, but also providing them with resources and support to be able to take their expertise into new opportunities with that professionalization of their work. We are constantly looking for new opportunities to provide training, to develop them professionally, and to introduce new skills where the staff are able to move into different opportunities and identify where there's opportunities to continue their education and move into new opportunities to work if they want to learn skills around case management. And this is really one of the things that's really amazing and important with the partnerships that we have with Catholic Charities and Life Bridge, to be able to introduce some of those new trainings and the partnerships that we have with some of the programs that make up the CVI ecosystem, where Safe Streets staff will have opportunities to participate and work with those programs if they are interested in pursuing new opportunities.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I was glad to see that partnership with UB. I think that's a good one and mutually beneficial. And I know they're Roper, I forget the name of the school, but it's like a criminal justice program there that I think has been excellent. So I was really glad to see that. And yeah, I just think the more we can do to continue to develop, I'm glad to hear about the five-year trajectory. I just think when folks stay stagnant in any job, particularly for like younger people right now, it, you know, gets, it can be a problem. And so continuing to think about how we're pouring into that workforce, I think is critically important. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the Safe Streets, to Monty, from my understanding, talking to my staff, I think we're not in the process right now to reopen the Bella Road location, correct? And we...
Say the last part of your question again.
The Bella Road location.
Oh, Beller Edison, yes.
Excuse me, Beller Edison.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, right now, the site is temporarily closed. We only have one active staffer, so we're doing an extreme hiring push right now. We only have one active staffer, so we're doing an extreme hiring push right now. The qualifications for reopening the site are identification of strong leadership. We know that that site has had strong leadership in the past. We want to make sure it's back. And then safe numbers of staff are canvassing. With one staffer, we can't safely canvas, but we're making a very strong push through this quarter, and, and I expect that our team will have a determination in March if we're able to, to move forward there. But we want to make sure we're doing it the right way in, with the community, and that it's safe.
And so there are other organizations you have coming in to help, from my understanding as well?
Yes. One of the things we're doing is a partnership with Living Classrooms Foundation, Dante Johnson with Operation Respond, obviously has deep ties to not just that site, but the community. And so partnering with him, Monty, Life Bridge, around a neighborhood stabilization response, because we know there's also been some recent incidents in the community that we want to respond to, and we don't want the community to feel like, while we need to take these steps today to temporarily, temporarily relaunch the site and shut operations of canvassing today, that it's not a net loss for the community, that we still have a presence.
But are they working in the capacity of like, like intercepting like crime and things of the nature, or they just providing like social activities or? And the reason why I'm asking is because I'm, I'm aware of Living Classrooms being in that area, but I never knew that they had partnered with you guys also to do some work. And I'm just trying to make sure that, that collaboration between you two is also working to the fact that, you know, the violent crime that we do see in the Bella as a community, are they like intercepting any of that crime that may occur? Or is it just providing those trauma response teams that's going out to be at the need of families in the community?
For the purpose of this neighborhood stabilization response, I think it probably will be more on the latter, but I don't know if I would exclusively say that. I know Crystal's been working more with Dante and his team, and also Life Bridge. I mean, I mentioned we have one staffer on-site. We obviously have another east-side location that's in proximity, but not in the Bella Edison community, so we'd want to be intentional about that role that we play. But Crystal, is there anything that you'd want to add there about the violence intervention piece?
Sure. The only other thing I will add is that we are definitely looking into how we can safely intervene when there may be some violent incidents giving the current status of the site, where we're able to intervene on potential violence while we're rebuilding the site. And so what that may look like is with the presence of the stabilization and providing resources, that our presence will hopefully deter some activity, but also if we are able to tap some staff who may have some credibility in the Bella Edison community, to work closely with that one staff member to do some canvassing, intervention, where they may become aware of something that could erupt as a violent incident, but doing it in a way that's safely and that makes the most sense, given the dynamics of each community and having respect for the Bella Edison site. So these are things that we are looking into, and how we can do that, given that the presence is needed for Safe Streets in Bella Edison. So it's, it's definitely something where we are considering and being very thoughtful and intentional about.
And I think, I think that it can work, you know, Dante being a former employee of the Safe Streets organization, well-known in the community up there as well. So I just hope that we can, we're just not missing a beat, you know? And we're, you know, definitely collaborating with Living Classroom, because Dante could bring a wealth of knowledge, information, and his experience that he had with Safe Streets. I think it'd work. So, all right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council. And I would say, Councilman, you know, of course, Living Classrooms Foundation used to be a administrator of Safe Streets sites, and when we went through the process of saying that that wasn't going to be their role anymore, we were very clear that we still saw them as playing a key role in the ecosystem. We actually fund their re-entry related work. We had a chance to go see Operation Respond and see that work in action. I feel like right now is the moment for us to be finding ways to come together, and I appreciate the distinction you raised there. Thank you for that.
And to be honest with you, to be frank with you, I've seen the difference when Living Classroom was over top of Safe Streets organizations. I mean, you could definitely tell the difference between where we're at now and before. And I've seen when Dante was there, you know, the community engagement piece, the, I mean, it was just one of the best Safe Streets locations.
He's set a high bar. He's definitely set a high bar. And I think when we talk to the community about what they want to see in a leader, that's the person who they're, they're going to be judging that candidate next to, so we know we have big shoes to fill, but it's important that someone with the level of firsthand knowledge, like obviously being a resident, someone like Dante is also in that mix, and we obviously have a relationship there, and want to make sure we can do this in the best way for the community. So appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions from the committee? I want to thank BPD, Monty, folks who were with us earlier, State's Attorney and Sheriff's Office. Appreciate the work you guys are doing. It's never going to be perfect, and we're always going to find flaws, so please don't be discouraged by any of the questions we asked today. Tyler?
Yeah, just before we close out, wanted to take the opportunity on the record to clear up the question that Councilman Costello asked earlier in reference to notifications during the underground fire event. So the council president was directly notified by the mayor as that event was unfolding. It's also my understanding that, addressing the chair, the respective council person for that district, which is Councilman Costello, was also notified by the mayor, chief of staff, and the city administrator. So the administration made the proper notifications in reference to this event, and I will follow up with you offline about, around ensuring that you're also read into these emergency situations as they unfold. But I want to be clear on the record that the administration made the proper notifications.
Tyler, I think it's important to note, first off, I was notified, as was the council president regarding the underground fire. That was not the context of my question at all. The context of my-
You insinuated that we had made notifications.
No, 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 no. Hold on. The context of my question wasn't about the underground fire. The context of my question was about whether the president or the chair were informed of the communications issue, which I will not get into due to the sensitive nature of it, whether they were informed of that. There is a difference between an underground fire and the effect of the underground fire on communications infrastructure. Are we clear?
Clear.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that that was clear on the record, though, because it, it didn't come across that that was a specific ask, but I just understood now.
So let me, let me be clear, so that there's no ambiguity in what I'm asking. I am specifically asking if the council president or the chair of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee was informed of the resulting communication-
The council president was fully briefed on the result of-
Excuse, excuse me, Tyler, Tyler, I'm not going to ask-
Every situation.
Tyler, I'm not going to ask again to not be interrupted.
Please finish your, your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question is, was the council president or the chair of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee informed of the communications infrastructure failure that was a result of the underground fire?
As I just stated, the council president was fully briefed on the result of the communications interruptions that occurred as a result of the underground fire.
Okay, so the council president was informed-
Absolutely.
The chair of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee was not, correct?
He was not.
Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day. Appreciate you guys. This hearing is in recess.